Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Select Board on Tuesday, March 1st, 2022. It is 7:02 PM and we're calling our meeting to order. This meeting is being conducted remotely pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021. And we will introduce ourselves. My name is Katie Conlon. I'm the Chair of the Select Board. Could our other members introduce themselves, please?
Alfred Doyle, Vice Chair.
Mike Zulis, Secretary.
Melinda Collins, Member.
Richard Wells, Member.
And we also have our town, interim town administrator.
Anne Marie Fagan, Interim Town Administrator.
And our Planning Director.
Hi, Tim Zerwinski, Director of Planning and Community Development.
And the Board's Executive Administrative Assistant.
Hi, I'm Lyndon Appleby. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Lynn. We're also joined by other members, including the Chair of the Planning Board, Denny Swenson.
Denny Swenson, thank you.
I see, actually, I see another member of the Planning Board, Kathleen O'Donnell, and there may be others. If there's other members of appointed or elected boards, Sean, if you could move anyone over. We're also joined by a couple of members of our Board of Appeals, Mr. O'Brien and Mr. Mullin. And I see several other members of appointed and elected boards, although I don't see a quorum of any of the other boards. So we thank them all for joining us. And actually, Allison Quinn, our Assistant Town Planner, just joined the meeting. Sean, if we could move Allison Quinn over. The members of our board would like to thank Allison for all of her service to the town and recognize all of her contributions now that she's going to be stepping down and moving to a position in Boston. And then we'll get started.
How are you? Sorry, I was on mute.
Hello, Allison. We can't see you, but we can hear you. We have the full Select Board. We have a couple of members of the Planning Board and other boards with us. Now we can see you this evening. So Allison has been working as the Assistant Town Planner in Milton for a couple of years and has recently taken a position in Boston, is going to be moving on, but we're very grateful for all of your service, Allison. And I think members of our board or the Planning Board may wish to say a few words of thanks.
Of course. It was great working with you.
And Mr. Wells, I know I'll speak to you. And if any other members have anything that they'd like to add, please feel free to do so.
Hello, young lady. Although I already, I'm going to echo a little bit more than what I said this morning. You came into this role at a unique time in history and everything that was faced from 40B to the improvement of landing to open space to so many issues that the new the new PUD down in the Milton Village District, so many things, your relationship that you brought with everyone from DCR to NEPRA, the City of Quincy, the City of Boston, the Seaport Council, Margot LaForest from the Economic Council, so many people who you really worked tirelessly every day to enhance the quality of life of people in this town. And I know you're OFD in that aspect. I'm not surprised that the City of Boston brought you back, but thank you for everything you've done. And I'm sure that for all of us in this town, our paths will cross again. And you've done extraordinary stuff in a very short time. So thank you so much.
Well, you're welcome. And it was, it was an absolute privilege.
Is there anyone else who'd like to say anything to Allison before we move on? We don't have another Select Board meeting until after Allison's next date. Mr. Doyle.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll just echo what Mr. Wells said in behalf of the Master Plan Implementation Committee. It will not be the same without you, Allison. And also, we recognize your loss with respect to the Community Preservation Committee. Those will be your experiences in that area, leaving big shoes to be filled.
Thank you, Arthur. I do leave you, I leave you in very confident. Tim is, has been fabulous to work with. He's very knowledgeable, very skilled. I am sure whoever they select to replace me, he will have them powered up and ready to go at the ground running. But thank you for your kind words.
Right. Thank you very much. And Mr. Zulis.
Madam Chair, oh, sorry. I would like to speak. I can't remember how to raise my hand, so I'll be quiet until Mr. Zulis is finished.
Go ahead, go ahead, Melinda.
Why don't you go ahead now, Melinda?
Okay. Sorry about that. I apologize. I'm not able to be on camera and I'm on my phone. So Ms. Quinn, Allison, you've brought such energy, such insight, and a lot of conscience to housing in Milton. And I just think that you can partner so well with anyone. Your collaboration skills are really unparalleled, as far as I'm concerned. We have a lot of great staff who collaborate well, but you've been able to communicate with all different kinds of people in the Affordable Housing Trust and the Housing Committee and people outside. And I can't thank you enough for listening to all of our ideas. And also, even though it didn't work out as well as we would have liked, that the local emergency rental assistance fund, I just really appreciate all the time that you took putting into that and also guiding residents to apply. You've made a lasting contribution to Milton and I'll miss you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collins.
I will miss you too. Thank you.
Mr. Zulis?
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. I will just add to everything else that's been said by remembering that just over two years ago, we decided to take a run at the Community Preservation Act. And Allison's efforts were critical to teeing that up and getting it to town meeting, getting it past town meeting and getting it passed, passed in the community. So, so that's going to be a legacy that Allison leaves in Milton for many years. So thank you, Allison.
Thank you, Mr. Mike. That was a great effort and you really teed that up. So I appreciate your, thank you.
And Allison, we have two members of the Planning Board, Denny Swenson and Kathleen O'Donnell. So we'll give them an opportunity to say a few words and then we will move on with our presentation.
Okay, we're going to say it again at the Planning Board meeting, but I just wanted to, I, I knew we would hit it off when you jumped in and did an incredible historic preservation map of the entire town within two weeks of your landing here. Your community outreach abilities also wowed me. You, you just have incredible, wonderful, thoughtful ideas. Your people skills can't be matched. You just have a very thoughtful approach to development and you've been an absolute pleasure to work with for the entire Planning Board. And I'm very, very sorry to see you go. And your next, you know, group is just so lucky to have you as a manager. I know you're just going to keep moving on up and with your can-do attitude. And I also just want you to know that, you know, I travel around town and neighborhood after neighborhood always has kind and thoughtful words and they always tell me that they feel like they have been heard after interacting with you. And that goes a long way with, with me and the rest of the town. So you have had an incredible impact and we are all sorry to see you go. So thank you, Allison.
Thank you, Denny. I appreciate that.
We appreciate you too.
So we're not actually going to let her go. I think we're just going to hire, you know, the side and, you know, certainly the Community Preservation Committee needs her and, and, you know, anybody with a sense of humor that can deal with all of us on the Playing Board is a valuable asset. Really, really, we're going to miss you, as everybody has said.
I will miss you all too. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Allison. Tim, would you want to say anything before we go on to your presentation? But Allison, we will have more to say at the housing meeting, I'm sure.
Yeah, well, Allison, we'll talk tomorrow and the next day. And we'll probably talk at the playing. I just think, you know, for the public, you're going to, you're going to see me with like bags under my eyes and gray whiskers over the next couple of weeks. And that'll be, that'll be the monument to Allison's abilities here because she really is, you know, really a great partner for our department. Really just stellar to work with. And, you know, it's, it's a terrible boss. It's Boston's game. But I think, you know, as someone that used to be an Assistant Town Planner and moved on to Boston, you're going to, you'll, you'll take a piece of Milton with you. You can't, you can't wash it off. So, you know, don't be a stranger is what I'll say.
I won't. I know where you all live.
Right. Thank you very much, Allison. So now we're going to go on with Tim Zerwinski's presentation on some very important new legislation, the MBTA Community Zoning. And I'm going to turn this over to Tim, who has a PowerPoint presentation to give this evening. And then just for the public's benefit and for anyone who's in the attendee group, we'll have an opportunity after Tim's presentation to ask any questions. So if you could hold your questions until after the presentation. We'll set aside some time for that. So thank you, Tim.
Thank you very much, Chair Conlon. And I appreciate the Select Board kind of having a special purpose meeting for this. I do have a bunch of slides. It's, I want to make sure that all of the information is out there for everybody. So, you know, having a little bit of breathing room to do that and to have public comment as well, I think is, is a special word. So I do definitely appreciate that. We'll, we'll get into the purpose of this presentation in a bit. I do want to just really quickly, before the presentation starts, to share my screen and show you all exactly what we're talking about. This is, can you see my screen? There's a calendar up right now.
Yes, we can see the calendar.
So what we're talking about is Section 3A of 40A of the Mass General Laws. MBTA Communities is the sort of common name for it. And I just bring it up because this is it. This is the legislation. It's very short. It's very broad. And, you know, when, when I get into this presentation, I tell you kind of how vague and broad and short it is. I just want you to remember these lines that it really kind of says some really simple stuff. And what we're here today to talk about is the, the more detailed guidance that's been delivered by the Department of Housing and Community Development. So I'm going to bring this up and go to full screen. So here we are. We've got a photograph of the Matapan Trolley. This is why we're here. We are an MBTA community with what the Commonwealth considers to be rapid transit service via the Matapan High Speed Line between Matapan Square and Ashmont. So as I led off earlier, what is the MBTA Communities Legislation? So this was enacted as part of the Economic Development Bill in January 2021. It was a little more than a year ago. It seems like 100 years ago that this enormous economic development bill was passed, had a lot of COVID-related items, had a lot of, just, there was a ton of discussion and commentary about this. You know, our legislature does this from time to time. Huge economic development or transportation or bonding bills that have all sorts of other, you know, goodies, for lack of a better term, attached to them. What I'll say is, one that got a lot of attention at the time was what we refer to as Housing Choice Legislation. This is the law that effectively only required a simple majority vote at town meeting for certain zoning amendments that promoted housing production. You know, this got a lot of attention in the planning community, a lot of attention in just the local government community. The other aspect of the Economic Development Bill that also got a lot of attention, but didn't really get a lot of attention as the bill was being drafted, it actually came as a little bit of a surprise to people, was this MBTA Communities component. And what it basically says is, any MBTA community, which is a statutorily defined term, there are 175 of them, I think. You know, effectively, if you've got T service, whether it's a bus or commuter rail or subway, you're an MBTA community, shall have at least one zoning district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing, which is defined as tiered more units, is permitted as of right and meets others' criteria. So the district has to have a minimum gross density of 15 inches per acre, can't be more than half a mile from commuter rail, subway, ferry to a bus station. It can't have age restrictions and it has to be suitable for families with children. The penalty for non-compliance is, a town will be not be eligible for these three state grant programs, NASWorks, Housing Choice, and the local capital projects. We'll get into those in a little bit more detail later, but that's an overview of what this, what this legislation sets. This is a map of all of the MBTA Communities, you know, and it's got the subway system and the commuter rail system overlaid on it. You'll notice that there are a few towns that don't have a purple line going through them. That is because they either have bus service or the legislation also considers adjacent communities. So if you are Ashby, for instance, you know, up in the sort of upper left of the map, and you have a part of your town that is within that half mile sort of radius of the Fitchburg Station, you're still on the hook to produce a zoning district under this, under this, really expansive stuff. There's no question about Milton. We're just out to Boston. We've got, you know, the Matapan High Speed Line. There's four stations in Milton, plus Matapan Station has a catchment area that catches part of Milton as well. So we are part of it. Famously, City of Boston is not subject to the law because it's not subject to Chapter 40A. That's just a fun little fact that people may be familiar with. So.
A minute, you're just breaking up a little bit. So I don't know if you could be a little closer to your microphone.
Okay, does it, I'm having, I don't want to say internet troubles, but if it ever looks like I'm kind of fading out or anything, let me know and I'll try to kind of fix my situation. So a, as I said earlier, the legislation itself is very short, very broad, because what it contemplates is the Commonwealth is going to put its departments to work in terms of putting together guidance for how communities can comply with this legislation. So it specifically says, DHCD, the Department of Housing and Community Development, in consultation with the T and Mast dot, will develop guidelines for how towns can comply. So 2021, every planner in the Commonwealth was on the edge of her seat, waiting for this guidance to come down from DHCD. And it finally came on December 15th. Because everyone was wondering, you know, what are the answers to these questions? What does it mean to permit multifamily housing as of right? What is a reasonable size? You know, how do you figure out the gross density? What does it mean that multifamily housing shall be without age restrictions, especially suitable for families with children? And then what is the flexibility that communities have in terms of choosing the location of their district that they've required to produce? So there's actually a standalone website that the Commonwealth has for MBTA Communities zoning. They're posting regular updates in terms of technical assistance and guidance and frequently asked questions. But we'll sort of run through some of the highlights of the guidance that DHCD, you know, put down. So as of right means, and we're all relatively familiar with as of right as a zoning concept, it means what it says here, without the need to obtain any discretionary permit or approval, no special permits, no parances, just you can go ahead and get your building permit. Site plan review is allowed, but site plan review can't be used to deny or reject a project. It can only be used to impose reasonable conditions and it can't make a project infeasible or unbuildable, you know, by virtue of an unreasonable condition. So, you know, we have site plan review right now for zoning compliant projects. It's a tool that many communities in the Commonwealth have. But effectively, what they're saying is, there's no special permit process, no public hearing for a special permit. The Planning Board does not have discretion to reject a project if it meets the zoning. What does reasonable size mean? The legislation says that you've got to have at least one district of a reasonable size. So it can't be a single development site. So PUP like, which is a planned unit development, like Walcott Woods or Woodmere or 88 Wharf isn't going to fly, not only because it doesn't meet the size standard, but it also can't be a single development site. It's got to be multiple development sites. And it's got to be at least 50 acres. And DHCD came down on that, on that figure, partially because 50 acres is about one-tenth of the land area within a half a mile of a transit station. So when you take that half mile radius and take it a circle, 50 acres is about a tenth of that, which they deem to be, you know, reasonable. You can do overlay districts. You can do sub-districts. The districts don't necessarily have to be contiguous, but at least one portion of the zoning district has to be at least 25 contiguous acres. And no portion of an overlay or a sub-district can be less than five acres. So that's going to be important when we look at Milton and figuring out what is the flexibility that we have to, to use the land use pattern that we have. The other component of the reasonable size requirement is what, what we refer to as sort of what, what is the zoned capacity? So they say a reasonably sized multifamily district must also be able to accommodate a reasonable number of multifamily housing units as of right. And what they do is they categorize towns by the level of MBTA service that they have. And there are four levels of service. Rapid Transit, Bus Service, Commuter Rail, and then the adjacent communities that I referred to earlier, which don't have a station but are adjacent enough to a station that they fall into that half mile catchment area. Rapid Transit is the highest level of service. And what DHCD has said is that if you are a rapid transit community, you have to zone for 25% of your existing year-round housing stock. And so what that means for Milton is, in order to comply with Section 3A, we must create a buy-ride zoning district of at least 50 acres with a zone capacity for 2,461 new multifamily units. DHCD has been very, very, very clear that this is not a mandate to produce 2,400 new units. They say, and this is a direct quote from the guidance, "There is no requirement nor expectation that a multifamily district will be built out to full unit capacity." But what zone capacity means is, when you look at the district and you look at whatever various density requirements and dimensional requirements are, are placed on that district, that you could conceivably build 2,400, 2,461 multifamily units in that district. So gross density is relatively straightforward. It really is just, what is the area of the district? What is the zone capacity in that district? And you do simple math. And if you get to 15, then you're in the clear. As I said earlier, sub-districts, you're allowed to do sub-districts and they can have a spectrum of densities. But all of the districts as a whole need to, need to come out to 15 multifamily units per acre. And we'll go through an exercise at the end of this presentation to kind of show you a little bit what that, that means. But effectively, you can have one sub-district that may have a 10-unit-per-acre gross density and then another sub-district that has a 20-unit-per-acre gross density. And then that'll, I think that is, if it doesn't, you can, you know what I mean? It doesn't, you know, there can be a district that, that has less than 15, as long as it evens out in another sub-district. It doesn't, you know, there can be a district that has less than 15, as long as it evens out in another sub-district. So, so those are the highlights. The effect of non-compliance, because this is a big deal. It's a big change for, not just for Milton, but for a lot of communities that are considered to be MBTA communities. So what the legislature has done is said, you know, if at any point DHCD determines that an MBTA community is not in compliance, that community should not be eligible for funds for the following grant programs. We've got Housing Choice Initiative, which is a program that attempts to reward towns for achieving certain housing production goals. And then we'll go into that in a little bit in a couple of slides. The Local Capital Projects Fund is a little bit of an arcane program, but it takes casino money that we have from our various gaming facilities and distributes it, distributes it to communities. It primarily goes to public housing authorities for capital projects. I don't know if we've ever availed ourselves of that, but it's a, it's a chunk of money. And then Mass Works is really the big one. Mass Works is a tens of millions of dollars a year grant program that the Commonwealth runs for infrastructure projects at further economic development goals in communities. And we'll look at those in a little bit more detail in the next couple of slides. The other sort of catch-all is that DHCD may, in its discretion, take non-compliance into consideration when making other discretionary grants towards DHT controls, a fair amount of money for planning grants and economic development grants, and all sorts of other, you know, programs that, you know, they will look at a community. And one of the questions they'll ask is, are you compliant at MBTA communities? When they make their award decision. So this is a really quick look at Mass Works. It's a competitive grant program, largest and most flexible source of capital funds to municipalities and other eligible public entities. And the goal is to accelerate housing productions for private development and create jobs throughout the Commonwealth. Over the course of years, between 66 and 95 million total distributed annually through the Mass Works program. Milton doesn't have a very long history of Mass Works grants, but we have gotten two since the program was created in 2011. There was almost $2 billion for improvements that had Houghton's Pond. I have to consider that was a partnership with DCR. And then I think the big one that people remember is, we got $1 million for improvements on Elliott Street between Central Ave and Milton Village, kind of a conjunction with the 30 and 50 Elliott Street apartment building project. We haven't gotten a grant since then, but similar-sized towns to ours, so that's plus or minus 10% of our population, averaged towards worth $2.2 million apiece since 2011. So other towns, City of Boston gets Mass Works grants every year. Holyoke is actually a huge player. You know, there's a lot of towns that have never gotten a Mass Works grant, but it is, it's a significant pot of money and is something that, you know, could potentially, you know, it would be, it would be tough for us to not be eligible for Mass Works. You know, because it is, it's free money, it's money that we don't have to spend out of capital for projects that could be necessary. Housing Choice Initiative, again, rewards municipalities that have produced housing to certain thresholds. This is Governor Baker's program that started up a few years ago. To be designated as a housing choice community, you have to increase your housing supply by 5% over the last five years, or increase it by 3%, and then also adopt certain policy best practices. Milton does not produce a lot of housing, and so we have not been eligible to get housing choice designation. That being said, we do have seven 40B projects going on right now that are in various stages of approval or appeal. And, you know, if you look at the numbers, it's conceivable that if those projects are approved and get building permits at the rate that they're coming, that we could make a credible, you know, case that we have increased our housing supply by 5%. It gives you exclusive access to the capital program, not dissimilar from Mass Works. And then you get preferential treatment for all of these other grant programs, Mass Works, Complete Streets, Mast dot Capital, Park and Land Grants, our Open Space Acquisition Fund. So this is something that Milton has not been eligible for, but, you know, one of the, one of the few silver linings of having so many 40B projects is, you know, if I hook or if I crook, we may, we may reach those thresholds. So the deadlines for compliance with this legislation, obviously, no one expects Milton or any town to, you know, come up with a new zoning district by annual town meeting. So really, the first threshold date is May 2nd, which is in a few months. And basically, DHCD has a form that you have to fill out that basically says, you know, here's all the information about our town, about our, you know, our transit access and our housing production history. And then we've got to demonstrate that, I've held a briefing of the Select Board, which I do tonight. So tonight's meeting is really kind of statutorily required in order for us to be considered compliant. But eventually, we'll have to start talking about how do we, how do we create this district? And so by the end of this year, we've got to submit to DHCD an action plan that says, here are the studies that we're going to conduct, here's how we're going to conduct community outreach. You know, basically, how are we going to come up with this zoning district? And then by the end of next year, we have to have adopted a zoning district. You know, effectively what that means, unless we, you know, are under the gun or put ourselves under the gun, we're really talking about a fall 2023 town meeting without the zoning. That's the, that's the time scale that we're looking at. So before we get into kind of what this sort of thing looks like, I just want to provide a little bit of broader context for why the legislature is doing what it's doing and how that fits into what other states are doing. I mean, we're all very accustomed to local control overzoning. There is some history of state creation of local control, I think CB is the highest profile example, which basically said, towns, if you don't zone for affordable housing, we're going to let developers build affordable housing, no matter what you say. So that's something that the Commonwealth is familiar with. But in more recent history, you're seeing a little bit more of this in some of these really high-demand states. Oregon, in 2019, passed legislation that effectively banned single-family housing. There's NPR headline, basically allowed duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, that's two-family, three-family, four-family housing on any lot in the state. You see, in California, Senate Bill 9 does a similar thing. You could build up to four units on almost any single-family lot throughout California. This is, in the upper left, this is an article that Slate Magazine did recently in January about our legislation. So this is a national link that people are talking about. On the bright side, Connecticut has been, Katie, are you?
Losing you a little bit again, if you could try to be a little closer to the mic.
Okay, sorry about that. So just to go back, in the upper left, you see there's a headline from Slate Magazine talking about our legislation. Connecticut, which is our neighbor, did a similar zoning reform push. Didn't really get everything that its advocates were looking for, but one thing that did come out of Connecticut's zoning reform is basically accessory dwelling units are allowed by right everywhere in Connecticut, no questions asked. So that was one effect of their zoning reform push. And then New York is correctly, has a bill floating around their Senate to do something similar to what California has done with Senate Bill 9, which is effectively, you know, you can't restrict a house lot to a single-family house, you've got to allow up to a certain number of additional units. And finally, you know, one thing that's kind of stirring in the legislature is another housing production bill. This is Bill H. 1448, that really, you know, is the MBTA community zoning bill with a boost. And what it basically says is, you've got to do the same thing, and if you're not compliant, then we're just going to preempt your zoning. Your zoning becomes what H. 1448 says it is. You know, that's, that was voted out of committee recently, so that'll have a public hearing in this session. The legislature will do with it what it will. You know, there's no, you know, how the sausage is made on Beacon Hill, there's no guarantee that any of this will actually happen. But I guess what I'm trying to convey here is that the toothpaste is out of the tube on this sort of thing. Not to choose, it's as a Commonwealth has a housing affordability problem, and the legislature has identified increasing housing supply as a solution to that problem. And so that's where MBTA communities comes from, that's where 1448 comes from, that's where a lot of what Governor Baker has been trying to do has come from. So I want to go through a couple of slides about what the options for compliance look like. And I want to preface this by saying that these guidelines currently are draft guidelines. And so a lot of communities are kind of in a holding pattern in terms of, you know, what do we do? How do we, how do we try to figure this out? Waiting for DHCD to finalize these guidelines. There's open comment period that expires on March 31st. DHCD is going to take all of those public comments into account, and then they're going to issue final guidelines at the summer. And so, you know, you can assume that the final guidelines will look kind of what they look like right now, but there's all, there's definitely opportunity for those to change. And so, you know, we're not going to engage in an exercise that really gets into the nitty-gritty of drawing lines and kind of figuring out sub-districts and if we have that final guide. But I did want to present kind of a little bit of an overview of what these densities look like. So if you have an existing compliant district, which is, again, by right at 15 units per acre, no age restrictions, you could conceivably count that towards your zone capacity total. But we don't have any existing compliant districts. Most of our land is single-family zoning. Where we have done townhouse and multifamily development, it's by special permit, not by right. And so it can't be counted as eligible. And then a lot of our multifamily development is age-restricted, which is not compliant with MBTA. So all of that just means is, we have to create new zoning districts from scratch. And this is just a map showing where we have allowed, what, you know, beyond single-family zoning in town Milton. And these are sort of familiar, you know, districts, the Milton Village zoning district, the Brush Hill, the Brush Hill condos at 333 Brush Hill Road, Woodmere, Walcott Woods, these are all townhouse developments. If you wanted anything more than a single-family house, including a two-family house, you need a special permit. And so, like I said, we've got to start from scratch here. This is a map that just shows what a half a mile from every transit stop in Milton actually looks like geographically. This is from the Mass Housing Partnership Transit Oriented Development Explorer website. It allows you to sort of look at, you know, all of these stations and kind of look at what the density is around them, and gives a lot of good facts. So you can see that, you know, the Matapan Station, you know, catches a fair amount of Milton, and then you've got Valley Road, that's left Milton. So when, when the legislation says you've got to create a zoning district within a half a mile of these stations, this is the geography that we're talking about, where this district has to go somewhere in here. There are provisions for having your district extend beyond that half-mile radius, but at least 50% of the district has to be within a half a mile. And so, you know, once we get into the exercise of drawing this district, we'll have to figure out if that makes sense to do or not. Because, you know, again, you know, if you're outside of this half-mile, you're further from transit, you're sort of starting to lose the benefit of the transit lanes. So there's two, there's two primary variables that we have to satisfy. The size of the district, it's got to be at least 50 acres. And within that 50 acres, you have to be able to potentially build at least 2,461 units. And so it's a really simple trade-off of, if you crank up one variable, you got to crank down the other and vice versa. So a smaller district, so if we wanted to go for the minimum-sized district, requires a greater density to create the minimum zone capacity. In order to fit 2,400 units in 50 acres, you're actually beyond 15 units per acre, which we'll see in a moment. And then if you wanted to have a lesser density, then you've got to create a larger district, so greater than 50 acres. So we'll see a little bit about what that looks like. So this diagram, and we'll be staying with this diagram for the next couple of slides, is kind of an often-used diagram in planning that kind of shows the spectrum of housing types, you know, from detached, single-family houses to the left, all the way up to, you know, there's no, you know, towers. You can imagine off-screen is Millennium Tower in downtown Boston. But, you know, this is sort of your, your kind of, you know, six-story, you know, Quincy Center-style mid-rise development. And in the middle here is what we refer to as missing middle housing, which is the type of housing that exists in a lot of, you know, older village downtowns, you know, pre-zoning areas, that is a little bit more variety than just your single-family detached or your apartment building. And I think this is what MBTA communities is really tuned for, is really encouraging towns to do this stuff that's up the middle. But if we wanted to have the smallest possible district, which is 50 acres, we would need a density of 50 units per acre in order to fit our zoned capacity for that. So this is, you know, you're really at the right side of this spectrum. We're talking about, you know, mid-rise apartment buildings. We'll have a couple of these slides as well. This is from a book called Visualizing Density, which really just does this. It says, you know, this is what 50 units per acre looks like in different contexts. You know, so this, this page shows 49 to 52 units per acre. And you see what we're looking at, you know, the middle, San Francisco, we've got apartment, you know, towers with, you know, space around them. In the back bay, in the south end, in Boston, you've got shorter buildings, but much, much, much denser, tighter. This California project is kind of not dissimilar from the next slide, which is a more local example, the Legacy at Arlington Center, which, you know, you can see on the left, you know, photographed, this is a four-and-a-half-story building. And then on the right side, you see a sort of a drawing of the complex itself. This is a relatively, I mean, it's a large-ish site, but you can see how dense it developed it is. These are not huge towers, but also the buildings are occupying most of the site. So this is a housing typology that, you know, we really don't have in Milton. 30 to 50 Elliott Street looks kind of like this building, but imagine if you had, you know, five of those on that site. That's what we're talking about, if you want to have that 50-acre zoning district. If you wanted to reduce that density a little bit, now we're talking about a 75-acre district will be prior density of 33 units per acre. So we're moving a little bit further left down that spectrum. This is what 29 to 31 units looks like in Tampa, Phoenix, and LA. You know, these are, again, these are housing types that we really don't have in town. You know, but what you're looking at is, you know, really sort of lot-line-to-lot-line development of, you know, four and a half, five stories, you know, on relatively constrained sites. And that gets you to, you know, 29 to 31, you know, we're looking at 33 different things. A local example is 88 Wharf. This is 29 units per acre, 88 Wharf. So that's a five-to-six rebuilding, depending on where you're standing. It's on a large-ish site, but not so large that, you know, there's a ton of, you know, extra space around it. I think everyone agrees that 88 Wharf is lovely. I think it's a real accomplishment, I think it's a real asset to the community. But as we'll see a little bit later, we're not really, we don't have many sites like this anymore. And I think one thing to the town's credit, you know, we don't have a very strong history of housing production, but I think in the areas where there are large sites that are appropriate for multifamily development, we have done that, 88 Wharf, 50 Elliott Street, 36 Central, Hendry's. These are all large, you know, underutilized sites that we've turned into multifamily houses. So that's good, but it also is going to present some issues that we're going to have to deal with, like Ron. So if you want to further crank down that density, if you want to get to 20 units an acre, now we're talking about 125-acre district. And so now we're kind of firmly in the middle of the spectrum of courtyard apartments, fourplexes, townhouse developments. This is what 18 to 19 units look like. You've got the Door Test example over here, everyone's familiar with, you know, some of the denser parts of Door Test. Some other spaces, you know, Tampa, I don't think we're necessarily Some other, some other spaces, you know, Tampa, I, I don't think we're necessarily going to build buildings like this, but this is again, a little bit of a lower rise housing type, with some, a fair amount of service parking and, and a nice tennis court in the middle. You know, this Cleveland example is sort of, um, smallish apartment buildings. I think you can see if you look closely, they're kind of Tudor inspired. So really trying to mimic sort of a traditional single family house typology, but obviously in, in larger, um, multi-unit buildings. And then, um, uh, an interesting example, um, and this is a kind of funky, Google Maps 3D image, um, is, is Glenway Street, um, in, in Dorchester. I picked this example because this is where I live. I'm, I'm coming to you live from this photo right now. This is off of Blue Hill Ave, um, kind of near Franklin Park. These are all, all of the houses that you see in this picture, except for what are clearly kind of small apartment buildings, are either two or three family houses. So they're, they're big. But these are all two and three family houses, um, you know, kind of tied together, but you know, no, nothing's bigger than, than three stories, you know, peaked roof style. You're not looking at any huge apartment buildings here. And this, this street right here is, is 22 units an acre. But that's, that's, that looks like. And so finally, if, if you want to get to, we, we talked that, you know, a few slides ago about the minimum size of the district and the density that would be required. If we want to get to the minimum density, you're looking at 160 plus acre district. So, uh, we have that, um, if, if, if you care to look. This is, um, Bill of War Street, um, on, on the west side of town. The Tucker School is, is in the lower right-hand corner. These are all two family houses. Two family houses don't count as multifamily under MBTA communities. So you, you have to build at a minimum three family houses. So thi- this type of, of housing exactly would not really cut it. But if you want to know what 15 units per acre feels like in a community, um, here's a street that you can walk down. The, the, the size of these lots, the, the closeness of the houses and, and the fact that they have multiple units per lot adds up to, to just under 15 units per acre. So, you know, when we talk about, you know, what, what does this look like? Does it feel like? What are the impacts? This is a street that's in Milton today, um, that, that reaches that density. So what are the next steps? As I said earlier, there is a comment period for DHCD that expires on March 31st. So, um, my, my, my assumption is that the select board is going to want to offer comments. I think you should. I think, um, what I'd like to get into, to kind of close out my presentation is what I think are some of the concerns that I have as a planner about how we're going to comply with this. So, you know, maybe those comments could be taken in as well. And then obviously there's a public comment period coming up that, that I, I'm sure that the select will take into account. The, um, the requirements that we comply in the year 2022 is again, tonight's presentation. And then first thing tomorrow, I'm going to fill out that community information form and get that into DHCD so that we're compliant and no questions asked. When we have to do, um, the real work. My, my staff now minus Allison, plus whoever the new assistant director is going to be, are going to continue to monitor, um, technical assistance resources, both from DHCD, from Mass Housing Partnership, other organizations. Because we, we do need some, some technical help on this, um, you know. We're going to need to talk to people, but we also need, you know, people with some expertise in, in zoning to, to kind of give us a, a, a lift. The Commonwealth has said that they are, are putting a ton of resources behind this, so I think we'll be able to get all the help that we need. And then we'll obviously, um, continue to support the planning board's discussions. This is going to, this is zoning, so it's going to go through the planning board, um, significant community process, significant opportunities. And then finally, as I said earlier, much still depends on the final guidelines. So, you know, we really can't, we don't want to go too far out on a limb until we've got those final guidelines. So I think the, um, you know, focusing on the comments to DHCD, I think is, is the immediate next step. So I think that is all she wrote for my, uh, presentation. So, um, I, I don't want to, I, I, I'm sure some of my, my, my concerns and my kind of issues, I think will come up, um, in, in, in the course of questions, but happy, happy to open it up.
Okay. Well, Tim, thank you very much for that very comprehensive presentation and, uh, very good PowerPoint. And we'll get the PowerPoint up online so that anyone who didn't get a chance to attend tonight's meeting will have an opportunity to look at it. Do we have any questions? Let, let's start with members of our board and then let's, uh, go beyond to other boards and members of the public and see if anyone has any questions or comments for Tim or any suggestions on what we might want to incorporate into a comment letter. So when we start with any members of our board, any questions or comments? If you don't have any immediately, we can go on to others. Anyone, anyone in the attendee group, if you would like to ask a question, just please raise your hand if you're on the telephone at star six to unmute. And I see Kathleen O'Donnell, her hand raised. Kathleen?
Oh, thank you, Chair Conlon. Um, I just wanted to say that I did attend a session done by the Real Estate Bar Association with, um, housing advocates and, um, land use attorneys that talked about the same MBTA communities issues. And I do intend on drafting my own letter, um, you know, as former president of REVA and all that sort of stuff to DHCD on this issue. But I would want to say that there are a couple of things that, um, came out of the, both of Tim's presentation, which was really excellent. Thanks so much, Tim. And the, and the REVA one is that, um, there is a provision in there for sort of special consideration for communities. And I think we should point out the fact that in the map that Tim chose of the area that qualifies for within 50, you know, 50, you know, whatever of the, of stations. Half of that's in the city of Boston, which is not under this provision, not by, guided by, by this provision. The rest of, a lot of the land is owned by DCR, so we can't build on it. And the rest of it's a river. As a person who, um, has represented many communities throughout the Commonwealth, there aren't that many, um, train lines that run through cemetery and by, by river. So we don't, we lose out on the available acreage because of the fact of our special circumstances. Secondly, um, having worked on smart growth zoning, when that was first adopted, I would like to suggest to DHCD that they consider sites that would have qualified under 40R for smart growth along bus lines and that sort of thing as potential areas for consideration. So that would bring East Milton and other areas that are, um, that won't count. Under this MBTA community situation, because we're treated as a train community, not a bus community. As Tim mentioned, there is a lot of talk about this, you know, site plan review and all that sort of thing. And this is sort of technically for lawyers, but there isn't any statutory guidance on what site plan review is. And we would sort of ask DHCD to sort of flesh that out a little bit more. And that would be, so as I said, I think we should be talking to DHCD and the select board should consider, I think, talking about the fact of the matter that, uh, we have a special consideration on the acreage that we have available because half of it is in dollars.
Thank you very much, Kathleen. Denny Swenson?
I guess. Thank you, Chair Conlon. And thank you, Tim, for that presentation. I, I was wondering if, if there should be, um, possibly a, a, a financial audit committee to sort of do an assessment, um, done of, you know, the, the likelihood of the amount of grants that we would likely see if, if we were to go forward and, and, and become compliant. And then, um, I'd love to see a thoughtful comparison, uh, to an assessment done of the likely impact to the, to our schools, our infrastructure. Will we need another fire department, um, police department? Water, sewer, roadways, traffic, creation of new parking. You know, I'd just like to understand the financials of both sides of the ledger and then do a, an analysis. Does it, does it make sense to become compliant? Or are we going to be giving up all of these things and actually ending up on the wrong side of the ledger? I, I, I am so grateful that Kathleen, um, assessed, um, the, the river. And, and I didn't even realize there was a cemetery there, um, along that. But the sustainability principles is my next topic of, of question. If we follow sustainability principles, it does make sense to do density along transit. So I, I can appreciate that. So some density along transit makes a, makes a lot of sense. The, the challenge is that I want to see this, the, the government, you know, the Massachusetts sustainability principles followed when it comes to the river. And also sensitivity when it comes to historic neighborhoods and historic houses and all of that. So it's, it's really a sense, it's really balancing our sensitivity of our sustainability principles with the, with the need for, for some density. You know, I, I, I do understand we all need to do our part to address this mandate, um, that the legislature has placed in our towns. And, and perhaps, um, as we get further down the road, Tim might be able to suggest some micro zones as he was, as he was trying to, um, get us familiar with how these things could look at. I, I just, this is going to take a, a huge effort on our part. On outreach, so our citizens can understand, um, what we're considering here. You know, people need to understand what to expect. They need to understand how they can best participate. It's just, it's just a mammoth outreach endeavor ahead of us. So I just don't want people feeling run over. I want them to feel like they're part of the process. So.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Conlon. Thank you very much, Ms. Swenson. Do we have any other comments or questions, including among those who are in the attendee group? Why don't we go to Mr. Doyle next? And then if anyone has a question, please raise your hand. Mr. Doyle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Tim, thank you for a very thorough presentation. And everyone for, uh, very important, uh, comments. When looking at the map, um, it seemed to me that there are similarly situated communities vis a vis with their, uh, transportation lines, uh, relative to town boundaries and so on down the line. I just, I, the town of Weston is one example. And might it be possible to take a look at, uh, any similar communities and see what it is that they're looking at doing? And whether or not there might be a construct for framing a coalition of such communities to help with the, um, determination of any, uh, possible flexibilities for communities so affected.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Three points, um, Tim, and thank you again for the presentation. This is definitely interesting, um, interesting topic. So first point is historical point on the Mass Works grant, only because I did a little work on that as chief. That 1.8 million of Houghton's pond was to the DCR, not to the town. And we, they were the recipients of the benefits of that, not us. The second thing is, so hypothetically, and this is more of a hypothetical, so hypothetically, the town sets a zone. Now, we're a community that's almost exclusively built up. And as you noted, you know, places like 88 Wharf are the rarity, not the norm in Milton. So for a developer, they would have to kind of do what like in Cadyo, remember this, what referring by, remember Milton LLC, when they bought 741 and where they bought that ring of, row of houses on bit by bit, they bought up five or six houses on Randolph Ave. Is that what a developer would have to do? Go into an area that's been designated and because they're almost all exclusively single or maybe two family homes, buy up a bunch to be able to put a project forward?
So
You can, you can answer that. You can answer that.
Yeah. No, thank you. And, and Richard, that, that actually kind of tees up, um, when, when I said earlier, I, I, I think that, that there'd be an opportunity to talk about some of my concerns and questions. I, I think you've, you've set it up exactly, um, with, with what I'm kind of, you know, concerned with. And I'm going to, if, if you, if you don't mind, I'm going to bring up the, the GIS, um, to kind of show you what the GIS mapper, sorry. Because you're absolutely right. And, and, and really what it depends on is what do you, when, when, when you, when you actually get down to writing the zoning, what is the minimum lot size? What are the dimensional requirements? And that's really going to determine, you know, whether or not you can build something and, and, and how you could possibly do it. So if you're thinking, and, and I'm just saying you as, as in just a person, if, if you're thinking that, you know, okay, we need to, we need to be able to do some, some mid-rise kind of apartment type buildings. You're not going to do that on, and I'm going to start sharing my screen now, if you don't mind, just so that everyone can, can just be reminded of the area that we're talking about. This is Elliot Street, you know, the river, obviously. You know, this is the sort of the meat of that sort of half mile catchment area. You're not going to build, um, big apartment buildings on a 6,000 foot Elliot Street house lot. And so, you know, Richard, just, just like you said, you know, in, in order to do anything that's going to support any type of, you know, unit count, you, you're talking about, you know, buying up, you know, one, two, three, four, you know, houses. So my, my concern, and, and so that, that's, if, if we were, but if we were to set zoning that said, you've got to have, say, a 20,000 square foot minimum lot size. And then, you know, whatever dimensional requirements around that, you wouldn't have any choice but, but to, you know, uh, agglomerate sites, um, in order, in order to get to that. Part of my, part of my concern is, and, and it really is kind of an open question for DHCD is, are they looking for just, get something on the books and we'll box and whatever? Or are they looking for a, a number of units? So that's really important because, you know, the, 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 the 711 Randolph Ave site, you know, that's a 90 unit project. That's a big apartment project. You know, you're not, you're not getting a site of that size in this part of town unless buy up 10 of these lots. You know, even if you wanted to have 20 or 30 units, you're still talking about multiple three quarter of a million dollar Elliot Street, you know, house lots that, that, you know, is that financially feasible? Can you reasonably expect that you're actually going to get multifamily units in a zoning scheme like that? I kind of think the answer is no, but you know, the real estate market is bananas right now. So who knows? But I, I, I think, and, and if you the other, the other direction that you can go in is the really low density on a sort of lot by lot basis, um, angle, which, you know, if you were to say, you know, a lot of these lots right now are between 5,500, 7,500 feet. Almost none of them along Elliot Street are actually zoning compliant or C-zone. If you were to create zoning that said, okay, we're going to reduce the minimum lot size to 5,000 square feet. And we're going to allow three units on every lot. That gets you to 15 units per acre. On a lot like that. And then all it becomes is, you know, drawing something that, you know, fits the, the, the minimum zone capacity. So that is a way that you potentially do zoning that wouldn't require.
Tim, I, I think we're losing you here. Screen is frozen up. We have some background noise also. So if anyone who's not talking could mute that, that would be helpful. Can you hear us, Tim?
Can, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
That's better now. You froze up for a couple of minutes there.
Okay.
Tim, why, why don't we go on? But let someone else speak while we're hoping to clear up your connection.
So basically what, what, what I'm getting at is it really depends on, um, so I'm going to mute and, and stop video for a second. So whoever's up next can go ahead and I can still hear you. So.
Okay. We, we have two people in the attendee group with their hands up. Denny, your hand is still raised. Did you have a follow up or?
No, I, I was trying to un, unraise my hand. Sorry. I'm all set. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So first is Erin Bradley. Could we move Ms. Bradley over to panelist and she can ask her question or give her comments? Who's Ms. Bradley?
I'm wondering, Madam Chair, I've been watching Channel 8 as well. I wonder if there's a little bit of a problem. It seems to, the picture seems to be freezing the towns on the television.
Okay, I think Erin is, Erin Bradley still has her hand raised, but let's go to, is it Ashali Singhham?
Yes, hi. Thank you so much for doing this. This was a very informative presentation. And I have a request that I'm sure will take some time to do, but one.
Could you just give your address and your name for the record?
Sure. Ashali Singhham, 62 Essex Road in Milton.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm just hoping at some point, and I don't know if this is something DHCD is going to do, but that we could get an estimate of how these type of changes, like what percent of zoned units actually end up produced? I'm guessing these Oregon and California laws are relatively new, so it's probably going to be a little bit speculative at this point. But, you know, I've been seeing this 2,500-unit number, and that's zoned amount. So it'll be interesting at some point to get a sense of the town of like, what do we think is actually going to come into production? And what's been seen in other places? So it's a request as this process goes along. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Erin Bradley, why don't we try to move Erin Bradley back, and then we'll go to Melinda Collins.
I'm like a foot away from my Wi-Fi, so hopefully I'm good to go for the rest of the evening.
Okay, do we have Erin? We seem to be having problems.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Okay, now we can hear you, Erin.
Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, the internet is oddly not working very well this evening, Madam Chair, and I apologize. I don't know if it's appropriate to ask Tim a question or to ask it through you. I'm wondering if any other cities or towns that are part of this now legislative mandate have opted to not partake in it, if he's heard of anybody throughout his work or conversations with his colleagues, if there's any other towns that are not considering doing this.
And Erin, if you could just give your street address, I know you're.
Sorry, I'm very sorry, Madam Chair. It's Erin Bradley, 28 Lincoln Street.
Thank you. Tim, were you able to answer that question?
Yes, and I think that's a really good question. I think it's a question that is coming up in probably every community right now. I'll say a couple of things. It's a shall in the legislation. An MBTA community shall create a zoning district. So while the legislation does lay out kind of a penalty for noncompliance, you know, it's interestingly enough, the, you know, Brookline has been talking about this, Newton has been talking about this. Those are sort of big, heavy hitters in terms of towns that are going to be affected by this legislation. And, you know, famously, in the sort of Massachusetts planning community, there was a meeting in Newton a few weeks ago where, you know, one of their city councilors was basically like, you know, look, you know, we've gotten a couple bucks from Mass Works, but, you know, we can do without it. You know, what's the, I don't think we should do this. I think it's, you know, an egregious kind of, you know, usurpation of local control. And one of the other members of their city council basically said, you know, what you're saying is, it's okay to break the law if you can afford the penalty. It's like parking in a handicap spot because you can afford the ticket. Which is kind of, you know, it's a little bit of a crude analogy. But, you know, when you have legislation and says that you shall do something, it really, and this is another thing that the planning community has been kind of talking about, what are the, what's the recourse beyond the eligibility for these grant programs? And, you know, I think Kathleen, actually, I think, you know, and she can talk a little bit more about this, you know, in her kind of research and the events that she's been a part of too. You know, there are elements of Mass General laws that basically says, you know, you have the ability to challenge the validity of a zoning bylaw. So if we go ahead and choose not to do this zoning, and you get a developer that wants to build a multifamily in what would otherwise have been a compliant district, you know, it's a real kind of, I don't think anyone knows. But again, you know, the requirement is that you shall do it. And it opens up a lot of really interesting and kind of unanswered questions about, you know, who has the standing to challenge the sort of the noncompliance, you know, based on that. And so I think there's not a great answer to that question. I know that, again, Newton has kind of talked about it. We're still very early days. Like I said, everyone is really kind of interested in seeing what the final guidelines are about. The last thing I'll say, and because I don't want to go too far over my skis on the legal component, but I think there's a political question here as well, where, you know, as I said, there's already a bill in the legislature that ramps up this sort of state preemption of local zoning. And, you know, the question becomes, if the legislature sees massive noncompliance by the very communities that they're trying to compel to produce housing, what is the next step that they take to ratchet up the pressure? You know, I don't think that, you know, if we achieve our goals as a Commonwealth and continue to grow and continue to build jobs and continue to welcome new people to the state, we're going to need housing. And so it really creates a really uncertain political future, you know, based on, you know, if the towns that really need to produce the housing don't do it, what's the next thing the legislature does? So that's a very long-winded way of saying I don't know, and it's kind of yet to be seen.
Thank you, Tim, and thank you, Ms. Bradley. Did you have anything else?
No, I didn't. Thank you very much for that explanation. And it really is, you know, what is the next step that the legislature is going to do? So that's, it's a really interesting take, Tim, and I appreciate your candor around that topic. So thank you.
Thank you.
I did have a follow-up on that question, if you don't mind, Ms. Chair. Is that the, as Tim mentioned, the sessions that I went to, there was discussion about the Newton position. Going back to Denny's comment about doing financial studies and all that sort of thing, and seeing whether it's just simpler to just say, sorry, we don't want your money, and we're not going to do that. And as Tim mentioned, the legislation says shall. And one of the attorneys in the room said that there is a provision for anybody, a developer, anybody seeking to use that zoning to go to the land court to seek enforcement and compliance. And so that's sort of the litigators, as, you know, as Mr. Zulus will know, is kind of circling the fences, trying to see, well, wait a minute, what's our opportunity here? On the second point, they did mention, somebody who represents a lot of 40B developers was saying that this was unfortunate for them. Because if a town zones for multifamily in certain locations, then they file a 40B for somewhere off in France, you can say no. And there are, there is, you know, appeals court cases that have said that if the town has zoned for adequate multifamily, then you can say, I don't want a 40B in France. That, so it does provide, this kind of zoning would provide some sort of defense about 40Bs being in completely inappropriate locations. So there's two sides to it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. O'Donnell. Before we go to the next question, I want to just read a question that came in that Tim, I forwarded to you earlier today from a resident who could not attend tonight, but had a question about trolley and train rapid transit versus bus service. So that his understanding was that the new policy applied only to communities with train, trolley, or subway service, and not with bus service. The MBTA has repeatedly discussed converting the Mattapan Trolley to a bus line. If that were to happen, even if not implemented immediately, could the town argue we should not be considered an MBTA community going forward? You spoke a little bit, I think, to this issue earlier, but could you expand on that and explain the bus issue versus the rapid transit?
Yeah, so it applies to any community that has MBTA service, including buses. Now, what the demarcation is, is that rapid transit is considered to be the highest level of service. We are considered a rapid transit community. That means, what that does is it pegs, you know, our zone capacity has to be 25% of our existing housing stock. If you are a bus community, that level is lower, but still significant. And let me just bring up that number, just so I have it at my fingertips. But it doesn't mean that you're not an MBTA community. It means that now your zone capacity only needs to be 20% of your year-round housing count. So, you know, even if the Mattapan Trolley didn't exist, we would still need to create a district along either the 240 or the 215 or the 255 or whatever, that accounted for 20% of our zone capacity, you know, of our existing, you know, housing. And so, and, you know, the point about, you know, converting the Mattapan Trolley line to bus, I know that that was a big deal, you know, back in 14, 2015, 2016. You know, with the T, who knows? Who knows? But I think the ship has sailed on that notion. There's a huge investment, albeit late, and over budget and over deadline, but a huge investment in refurbishing those trolley cars. And, you know, if we hold the T to their word, there'll be a significant amount of improvement to that line. And so I think their commitment is to rapid transit on the Mattapan line. But even if there wasn't, we'd still be dealing with this, albeit in a different part of town.
Okay, thank you, Tim. I saw an attendee's hand next, and then we'll go to Mr. Wells. Sean Fahy is next. Mr. Fahy, will you move over to panelist? And if you could just give us your name and address for the record, Mr. Fahy.
Of course, Madam Chair. My name is Sean Fahy. I live at 202 Old Farm Road. And I am also a town meeting member in Precinct 9. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I probably have a couple of comments and a couple of questions. If I first could ask my questions to Tim. Tim, if the eight town were to participate, is it an all-or-nothing type of proposition? And my second question, before you answer my first, is, is there a timeframe, if a town commits to participating, that you have to accomplish what they outline?
Yeah, so both good questions. I just want to, again, I guess I want to kind of make sure we're using the right language. Not necessarily participate, it's a mandate from the state that we've got to do something. And so if we choose not to, we're penalized, you know, via those grant mechanisms. But, so I, Sean, what do you mean by all or nothing, I guess, is my question?
Well, there is a number of units that need to be created, if I heard you correctly.
So actually, it's, so we're not, they're not going to count the units. So it's not a production mandate, it's a regulatory mandate. So we've got to allow for the units to be built. If not a single unit gets built, we're still compliant, if we have the regulation in place. Now, the question becomes, what is DHCD going to give the thumbs up to a zoning regulation that, you know, technically meets their guidelines, but perceivably and reasonably won't result in units? I actually don't know that. But the only requirement is to actually write the zoning and pass the zoning. And so if 2,400 units get built, then we're compliant. If no units get built, we're compliant because we've got it on the books. And it does have to meet every single one of those criteria. So if you've got a district that only adds up to 14 units per acre, you're not compliant. I think that's what you're getting at.
It is, it is. Two other comments. One is what you described earlier with respect to accomplishing this, accomplishing some development within the area of, let's say, Elliott Street. And the example that you outlined of purchasing four, five, or possibly more existing residential lots, so that a larger, a large building could be built, seems financially, financially, I think what that would do is create such an expensive land cost that the units that would be created would probably be very expensive units. That's just a comment. You know, at the value of residences in Milton today, I think the land acquisition cost would be very expensive. And ultimately, we wouldn't be accomplishing something we need in town, which is more affordable units. We'd probably be creating units that are expensive.
Yeah, I think, and Ms. Conlon, if I can just riff on that a tiny bit, because I think that's a really good point. And I think it also brings up a concern that I have and that other planners have raised. First, to sort of, to go to the end of Mr. Fahy's comments, I think the way the Commonwealth looks at this is, as a region, we need more housing of all types. Subsidized, affordable, working-class housing, units in all sorts of different types of, we need all types of housing. And so it's very sort of specifically geared towards the production of market-grade housing, because not enough of it exists. And the more that you increase supply, the more that you satisfy the demand for housing that's driving up prices. That being said, you know, especially, and I'll, I'll kind of frame this in the kind of 40B sense, because I think it's just the framework that people understand. You know, if you followed, you know, the conversation about accessory dwelling units, the planning board is currently having, that will be discussing at town meeting. And if you, you know, there is a concern that's been raised by critics of that. Well, you know, you're probably not going to get affordable ADUs, because it's just not how ADUs work. And all you're going to be doing is adding units to our year-round, you know, housing count. And that's going to, you know, drive up the denominator on our 40B, and we're going to lose ground. This, you could say the same thing about this proposal. Now, the fortunate thing about a multifamily zoning proposal is that you can add an inclusionary component, similar to what we've done in other planned unit developments, and similar to what we've done in the Milton Village zoning, which, you know, any, you know, any project above a certain size, you've got to build 12%, you know, SHI units, which would keep us above water on 40B perspective. In order to do that, though, you need to permit a project of a certain size. And so in my example that I talked about earlier, is like, okay, if you reduce the minimum lot size on Elliott Street or wherever, and allow, you know, the minimum number of units to be considered multifamily, just three, which I know that's a big deal for Town of Milton, but in the sort of the grand scheme of things compared to a hundred-unit apartment building, a couple of three-unit, you know, houses is not as big an impact as a big apartment building. But you would never be able to have an inclusionary component in zoning like that. It would be effectively a 33% affordability requirement. If you were to have one unit in a three-unit building, be affordable, that's not going to pencil out for any developer. Somerville has that requirement. I don't think it's been working out in terms of producing a lot of units in three-unit buildings. So if you do want to have buildings that are going to support an inclusionary requirement and keep us above water on our 40B subsidized housing, you're going to have to permit larger buildings, 10, 15, 20, and up, unit buildings, that can actually have the density to support an affordable unit. And so now we're in the territory of, well, is that going to be financially feasible for a developer to do, given the land acquisition costs and then all the other things? So it's a real challenge that we're going to have to deal with. And I'm looking for additional guidance from DHCD about, you know, if we come to you with what is probably an outlandish inclusionary requirement, are you going to approve that zoning? Or do we really need to be producing zoning that is going to definitely credibly produce units? So in terms of Milton, and there's other towns that have challenges, but I think the fact that our trolley is in a very old and kind of, I don't want to use the term "built out" because there may not be a lot of land, but there's plenty of sky. This is what planners say all the time, you can always build up. But the lot sizes are tiny, and they're not going to, you know, you're not going to be able to build a ton of housing on a 5,000-foot lot. And so if you want to get something that's going to, again, support the density, that's going to support inclusion requirement, you're talking about agglomeration. So we really have a relatively unique issue with our parcelization in terms of town that I think is going to be really tough to thread the needle on. And I'm sorry for taking up so much time, but this is literally like the primary thing that I think. So, Mr. Fahy, thank you for teeing that up.
Right.
Well, I, Madam Chair, if I could just, I just have one last comment. Tim, thanks very much for not only your presentation, but your lengthy responses to all the questions, mine and those and those questions of the others. I think my last comment would be that this is an enormously complicated matter. And Denny Swenson suggested earlier a study. And I think with all of the benefits that this could provide the town, and also potentially the cost that the town could incur from it, I do think that Denny Swenson's suggestion of a study would be a prudent decision for us to make at some point in time. I do think that Denny Swenson's suggestion of a study would be a prudent decision for us to make at some point in time. Thanks very much for the opportunity to talk.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fahy. Is there anyone else? Let me go back to Ms. Collins, because she had her hand raised earlier, and I forgot to go back with her. So Melinda Collins, did you want to add anything?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No, all my points were just made. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the attendee group, or anyone else in the panelists among our board, the other boards that are present? Is there anyone else who would like to ask a question or offer a comment? Mr. Doyle? And you're on mute, Mr. Doyle.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to reiterate what Tim had in his presentation, that there is a December 31st, 2002 requirement. It seems pretty tight, that's only 10 months away. So there's much to be done in a very short period of time. And going to, references to garnishing any external resources that may be available to assist in this might be very important for us to do, particularly where other communities would be doing the same thing.
So, Mr. Doyle, just to clarify, the December 31st, 2022 deadline is to produce an action plan for how we're going to draft the zoning. So I think, you know, the consideration of any, any studies or analysis that we're going to do, a sort of an outline of what sort of community outreach we're going to do, that's what we need to have done by the end of the year. And then by the end of, by the end of '23 is when we need to have the zoning actually. So, you know, part of that discussion is going to be sort of gaming out, you know, via that action plan. You know, again, traditionally, we try to have a fall town meeting to do zoning. You know, we may want to give ourselves some more time. You know, maybe have an early winter town meeting, for instance, in order to have a maximum amount of time to sort of do that outreach of analysis. But again, I think that's what we're going to probably spend, you know, a significant part of, you know, once we have the firm final guidelines in place, we're going to want to, you know, take a look at that action plan and start getting that in place. And I think, honestly, you know, if I have my way, which hopefully, you know, it's up to other people, if that's going to be the case, we'll get that action plan done well before December 31st and actually start implementing it. It is a tight deadline. And that's one thing, you know, Mr. Doyle, that, you know, the comments that come from municipalities and other, and other folks, you know, may influence DHCD on, is that, you know, look, we're talking about a lot of really small communities that, you know, you know, compared to, compared to some other communities, we have a huge planning staff with, you know, two people and a clerk. There are other towns that don't have the, even, even close to those resources. So they're going to want to have more time, you know, to do this. So I think that may even be, if that's the select board's, you know, desire, that's a valid comment to make, that, look, we just need more time. I don't think we should drag our feet. I think we should make a good faith effort towards doing this. But also, you know, it's tight, so.
And that's what I wanted to point out. And I agree with you. I had made a notation about December, Winter Town Meeting as well. And we both know that, that action plan, the front end, is going to really affect the back end.
Hey, thank you. Mr. Zulus, and then Mr. Wells, and then we should talk about the comment deadline.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tim, is that action plan intended to be the product of the Select Board, the Planning Board, the Planning Department? Or is it, is it, is it clear where that, where that's coming from?
I, it could be clear. I, I'll have to take a look at the guidance and see. But, you know, it's probably, it's an all-hands-on-deck situation. So, you know, we're going to, I anticipate my department will lead the charge on that. So, you know, whether it comes from one board or another, we can, we can figure that out.
Yeah, someone's going to have to own it. So one of our boards is going to have to own it.
Okay, Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tim, just one final comment, because Catherine O'Donnell made a good point. When we do border 8.5 miles of the city of Boston along the Naperville River, and that's the entire border, not, not just from Matapan to Milton Station. Do we, do we have any concerns at all on the Quincy side? Like, North Quincy State, what if Quincy decides, say, on the North Quincy Station? Because I think the Milton Line may be within a half a mile of that station. I think it's a little bit too far from Austin, but I think it's within a half miles of Grofies. Could that impact us as well from them? That from the red line that runs, the high-speed line that runs from Mashmore to Braintree?
I am looking that up as we speak. You know, obviously Quincy can't zone in the Town of Milton, so we've got that going for us. But, but to the point that, you know, perhaps the, you know, they could potentially do a zoning district that kind of, you know, touches, touches our border. I'm just looking right now, both, both North Quincy here. Let me, if you don't mind me sharing my screen, I can show you this, if everyone can see it. This is North Quincy right here. This is Wallaston. And this line right here is the border with Milton. So none of those half-mile radii touch Milton. Like I said earlier, you could conceivably have half of a zoning district outside of this. But, you know, I can't speak for City of Quincy. I can't imagine that they would want to extend a district down Adam Street when they've got, you know, plenty of development opportunities around.
Okay. Okay, that's it. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks, Tim. A lot of good questions. This would be, this is definitely going to be an interesting prospect moving forward.
Okay, let's go to the Planning Board Chair, Denny Swenson, next. And then I think we should talk about the, we have 30 days to do a comment letter and get that into DHCD. So, Denny?
I just wanted to say on the comment letter, I think Kathleen and I, and there might be other planning board members on, would agree that we would, the planning board would probably like to take, take a look and, and provide some comments, at least, Kathleen. I'm thinking, you know, at least some of the comments that you made earlier. I know, I know the other planning board members would like to participate in that. So I think we would like to, the, the planning board would like to provide comment to the Select Board as well.
Well, actually, I mean, I did say I was going to be sending in my own.
Okay. Well, I think we might reiterate some of yours.
Yeah. But yeah, I'm willing to share.
Well, that's always nice. Thank you.
I think that would be helpful. So our next regular meetings are March 9th and March 23rd. And we could put this on both agendas. And so whenever the Planning Board meets and discusses, if you, if you do come up with some written comments that you send over to us, we can incorporate those into a letter, or we can, working with Tim Zarwinski, we get a draft started and, you know, shared among the two boards and elaborate that way. And, and borrowing some of Kathleen's ideas from her, her own individual letter and reiterating some of those points might be a good idea as well, so.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Wells.
Would it be prudent for us also, since we, we do have a relationship with Judy Barrett, and especially Joanna at this time, to maybe even seek a little bit of their input on this, what they think about it? I mean, this is, I'm just, just a thought. I mean, we do have.
I mean, Tim, I don't know if you've had any conversations already with Judy or Johanna on this topic?
Not with Johanna, you know, Judy and I talk almost every day on, not necessarily this. Well, I mean, we have, we have talked about this. I mean, she's got, she's got her own views. I, I think, I, I think that's certainly, that's certainly fine. I would, I would want to, you know, pay Judy for her time. She does, she does a lot for this town on, on what we don't realize is a pro bono basis in terms of just, you know, advice, kind of helping, you know, the extra step on some of her projects. So that's something that you, you need to sort of weigh your appetite on. I, I think, you know, obviously, I'm your guy on this stuff. So anything that I can do, either, you know, starting off a draft or adding to a draft that you want to write up, you know, obviously, this is, you know, it's as high a priority for me as you all decide it is. So, so yeah, but I, I think, you know, Judy is following this just as closely as anyone, you know, in the Commonwealth. So if you did want to reach out to her, she'd provide, you know, some insight for the, you know, yeah.
Well, in addition to that, I think we should check in and see where the Mass Municipal Association stands. You know, they're obviously very much in favor of local control of zoning and other issues, but they also were very supportive of the Housing Choice Initiative. So it'd be interesting to see what, what they may be lobbying for, or maybe possibly even sending their own comment later. Ms. Collins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, there was a recent webinar that I attended with MMA and DHCD. So, so you're right, they do have a stance on this. I think they are still working on, on that as, as every community is, because the guidance isn't quite finalized. We're in that comment period. I, I would like to see Mr. Zarwinski start a draft on behalf of the Select Board. He really, this was an excellent presentation, and he actually had brought it to the Housing Committee and the Affordable Housing Trust. So we've had the benefit of, of hearing a lot of his thoughts, some of us a couple of times. But he really is the lead on this. He's got an excellent grasp, and he has great contacts at DHCD and MHP. So I, I would be really grateful if he would do that. And I know that the Housing Committee, and I'm sure the Affordable Housing Trust, but I really shouldn't speak for them, but the Housing Committee is, is ready to, to help where we're needed, both on any analysis and, and helping to write the letter. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. I think that suggestion from Ms. Collins makes sense, that we should ask Mr. Swenson to take the lead in the drafting, and, you know, to Richard's point, consult with the parties necessary, which may include Judy Barrett or MMA or folks in the planning world, whom I don't even know. So if that's agreeable to the rest of the board, we could ask him to get started on that, knowing we have a very short period of time to act. Mr. Zulus?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick follow-up. Our meetings are March 9th and March 23rd. So, Tim, if you're going to have an initial draft, I don't know if we want to, Madam Chair, I don't know if you want to scope out the timing of this, and whether we might get an initial draft for next week, or at least something for next week to start us on this road. I'll leave it to you, Madam Chair.
But let's see what Mr. Zarwinski thinks. Obviously, his plate is pretty full already, and we'll be picking up some work from Allison when she leaves.
You'll ask Allison to do a draft on her way out. You, you will, you will have, you will have something before, before your meeting. I'm going to, I'm going to do my best to get something kind of done by the end of the week. It is, it is tight, but I, I have some thoughts already. And I think it'll just be good to get something on paper for you, for you all to, you know, kind of work with. So you will have something. I'm going to make it as, as complete and formal as I can in the timeframe. But I do think Mr. Zulus is correct, you know, competing to stuff, you know, between now and the end of the month. We want to make sure that you've got something to talk about next week, so you will have something.
Okay, that's terrific. Thank you. Anything else from, I don't see any other hands raised. Is there anyone else who would like to ask a question or offer a comment this evening before we adjourn? Going once, going twice? I don't see any hands among the attendee group. All right then, thank you to everyone for your participation this evening. Thank you especially to Tim Zarwinski for a very thorough presentation, and obviously a lot of work that's gone into looking into these issues already. So, Tim, thank you very much, and thank you.
Absolutely. Thanks for having me. And again, I'm at your beck and call on this stuff. And so, yeah, we'll, we'll figure this one out, gang.
All right. Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second. All in favor of the motion to adjourn? Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes, and thank you to everyone who attended tonight and participated.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, the board is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, and more to come on March 9th. Have a good night, everyone.